September 17 to order and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will be going into closed session. And again, I
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will be going into a closed session at the public employee performance evaluation for the city manager. We'll be back in a half an hour.
Thank you.
We are back from closed session and is there actually reportable action?
Uh, no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. And may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Shiglin.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I've received none.
Okay. Department head reports.
Everybody's running up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. The last couple of weeks, the Public Works crew continued to do routine cleaning, wash downs and sweeping of alleyways, parks and front street. They also completed projects and essential tasks like relocating the paddleboards, excavating for cemetery burial, final demobilization of Crescent Hillside, irrigation inspections and repairs. We will still continue to do road striping and markings around town with stop signs, red curbing, and actually it is amazing how time consuming this is. For example, on the terraces, the crew preps the street by cleaning it up, pressure washing, and then taping down the stencils, and they hand roll the red paint because of the curves. So that's, that was kind of surprising to me. The paint sprayer can't do those nice curves. So they will continue onto the fall with more striping, and as the fall season approaches, we will focus on preventative maintenance and backlog projects. Some of those projects are again installing four new water bottle refilling stations that we just received. The flooring at the G M F restroom still hasn't been completed, some river fountain, repairing manholes, installing a niche wall at the cemetery and getting ready for the storm season. And getting ready for the storm season means inspecting roofs and making necessary repairs. So that's all underway. Finally, we have an intern, Rigo, Rigo Berto Pedroza Jr., that started at the shop a couple weeks ago, and it was awesome. He's just doing wonderful. As you all know, I love talking and connecting with the crew and just beyond their daily work. And in one of those conversations, I learned that one of the crew member's son is really interested in mechanic work and working at the shop, going to college, and really trying to employ those skills in live action. So with the help of HR, we came, we all came together. Now Rigo Jr. is interning at the city shop and applying everything he learns on a daily basis at, in college, and we're just, everyone is excited for him to be part of the team. So if you see him around, tell him thank you and welcome to the city team.
Excellent. Yeah. Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, could you hear better now with the?
Look, it started better. It seems like it was coming across better, yes, yes. I think the mask doesn't help, but, but yeah. I think it's a little better right now.
Speaking into the microphone.
That's the trick too, yeah.
It sounds a little clearer out here.
It does?
Yeah.
I asked my husband to respond and let me know, but he hasn't done anything yet.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city councils. Since my last report Tuesday, September 3rd, patrol moored 1,065 boats for a total of 3,568 nights. Patrol warned or advised 32 individuals of municipal code violations, which one of them did occur in the marine protection area. Patrol assisted Baywatch one time, provided public assistance to 73 boaters, responded to four medical calls and assisted the Baywatch, or excuse me, U.S. Coast Guard one time. Patrol did 155 security patrols of the facilities and surrounding waters. Thank you.
And is the weather going to stay pretty nice now? We have that, we have the storm warning flags, but are we all good right now with the storms? We're good?
Oh, yeah. We're fine. Yep, it was all westerly.
Okay, thanks. And Michael just got a message from somebody that they said the sound sounds fine.
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. This morning, we did a tabletop drill, Public Works, Harbor, sheriffs, ourselves, Edison, someone from county OES, all the Edison representatives from the mainland, there are probably 30 of us in the room, did a little tabletop on a possible earth, on a scenario, kind of ran it, what would we be doing, how we, how do we interact with Edison? It was a good little three hour drill that we did this morning. Next year is going to be hands-on, so next year we'll be doing it out in the field. But it was good to meet some of the people that will be coming and helping us from the mainland. Bombards were on it via Zoom, so it was a good, good productive morning. There'll be, there's going to be a little bit of noise and water outage tomorrow night. I found out more details. At nine o'clock, the school is helping, the school's putting in new valves, helping Edison to be able to isolate. The valves are old, they're going to remove them and set, and replace a couple of them. So at nine o'clock, they're going to cut the water up Falls Canyon. It'll only affect, it'll affect the hospital, the school, and only a little bit of Fairview, but there's going to be some noise. They're going to have to use the vac truck and do some stuff, but hopefully they'll have the water all turned on by 3:00 a.m. Monday, September 30th at 5:00, I'd like to hold a, and I'll send this all to you. Just start, I'd like to start a couple of just wildfire discussions with the community, invite them up here, and just have, if they have questions, we'll be here to answer them. But, and then we'll get, be able to push the message out about brush clearance around your house and all the little things we want them to be doing. So I'll send that info to you and we'll put it on our website.
Questions?
Um, that actually reminded, I believe I brought it up before, but is there any way, I forget what month it is, I would do like a national shakeout or a state shakeout, but I was wondering if we could participate in, you know, we've had a lot of earthquakes lately, and so I'm sure there's a lot of us on edge on what we should do, where we should go, partner with the school, Edison, ourselves, all that good stuff.
I think it's in.
October.
October. It's coming up pretty soon. But yeah, but that's one of the, probably the hardest question I get is where do you want me to go? I don't know. I don't know where it's going to happen, I don't know where it's going to be, but we'll talk about different options and we'll give you the ideas that we've, we've already gone over of where we could put people.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
But yeah, we will sign up for the shakeout and do something.
Okay. I mean, just the last one, I know that it was just me and my little kids, and I'm the only adult in the house, and I'm still shaking up myself, so I would like to know, okay, on paper it says go here or do this if possible.
Yeah. No, it's a good reminder for everybody to have a, have a little kit, be prepared. We could be over here with no power for a little while or, and no food, so always, always be prepared for at least a couple days. Solar powered phone chargers and things like that, because, yeah, just have your own little kit and we'll have some info on that as well.
Right, so according to shakeout.org, it's October 17th this year. And there's also, if you don't know, there are apps available, My Shake or something like that on iPhone, and there's also an app available on Android, and it alerts you before the quake actually hits. So download those and be prepared.
Evening, Madam Mayor, city council, city staff. Since our last council meeting, we've had 186, by the way, the sound is phenomenal, I can hear myself. So we had 186.
Now what is that?
That might be from the audience. That's me or not, but I don't think it is. Let's get my radio off. So we had 186 calls for service. Of those, 98 of them were, were calls from the, is this a loud green?
It was repeating what you were saying for some reason. There we go.
So we had, oh, sorry. I spoke way too soon, I apologize. We had 180, I was from the deputies, they're basically writing their own calls on, in their computers, and then we had 98 calls from the public. We ended up getting four arrests. There was one for felony vandalism, one for misdemeanor vandalism, one for misdemeanor domestic violence, and one for stolen vehicle. We did 10 traffic stops. Dave Hart and I had a meeting last week with the Sheriff's Youth Foundation regarding having a explore program, and it was very productive. It sounded, it sounds really, really good to me, like we're probably going to be able to do it this year. We're looking hopefully at the end of the school year so we can get them going in, what do you think, Dave? what do you think, Dave, like groups of like three days in a row, maybe four days in a row, and hopefully get it done in two to three weeks with their training. And then there'll be full-blown explorers on the island. So that'd be fantastic for the sheriff station. You know, we'll have more eyes and ears out there and hopefully future deputy sheriffs. That's the goal ultimately. Thursday night is back to school night. We'll be there, myself and at least one deputy will be there just passing out stickers, talking to kids, bike safety, helmet safety and that kind of thing. That's from 5:00 to 7:30. At the end of the month, in two weeks, we have a new administrative personnel starting, basically a secretary is going to be starting at the station. We've been short for a while, so we're kind of excited about that. We have a new jailer starting also next month. And we are set to have a new sergeant start up in December. So we're doing well in personnel. We're getting back, our numbers back up, so hopefully less overtime and more sleep for our guys.
So what does a jailer do?
The jailer, basically, when we arrest somebody, they work the weekends typically. So they're the most likely time to make an arrest, which is for us, it's Thursday through Sunday. They come in at like 6:00 P.M. in the evening and they work until about 4:00 in the morning. During that time, they do the bookings, they do the Title 15 checks, which is a requirement by California state law. So when you have someone in your custody, depending on their classification, if they are an inmate that has zero issues whatsoever, no classification that would make us fear that they're going to harm themselves or something like that, you have to check those people every hour. And they have to do that, so they make sure they're breathing and they talk to them every hour. And obviously, other classifications, like if they're suicidal or something like that, it's a little bit tighter timeframe. They kind of keep up on the paperwork, make sure the jail is in order. And they also have other responsibilities throughout the station that we have them do. There's, we're, our personnel, that we have a lot of duties to take care of. So we kind of, we do a lot of different jobs there. You know, we have, wear a lot of different hats at Avalon Station. And that's, that's from the jailer to the secretary to meet everybody else.
But is this a gun-toting person or no?
I'm sorry?
Is this a gun-toting person or?
No, no. They are a civilian employee. They are trained in laws of arrest and laws and use of force and that kind of thing. And they can use a taser, but they don't use actual firearm or like a baton, anything like that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, good, thank you. Questions or comments?
I have a comment. Saturday, we did the ABBA concert. I'm part of Rotary and we had the Beer Garden. And I'm the one that worked the gate. My disappointment being that there was no sheriff's presence other than the cars parked at the end of the street, which to me do nothing, that I had about 10 people come up to me with a cocktail in their hand and I'm turning them away because they can't come in with a cocktail in their hand. And my question is, why are you on Front Street with a cocktail in your hand? The idea that there is no presence and that nobody's stopping these people from walking around with drinks in their hands down Front Street and they, either getting them in the bar or they're walking from wherever they're staying, that there is no presence that stops them with that cocktail. I'm just really disappointed in that there was no sheriff's presence on Front Street Saturday night, other than the car parked at the end of the street.
I had to look into what's going on that night. I don't know what kind of calls they had. I have no idea. And I don't even know who's on shift right now. I'd have to look up and get back.
The car sat there empty. There was nobody in it. And just that, that they did not walk the street at all. I didn't see a presence of the Sheriff's Department there. It's just, I'm not happy. That bottom line, it's just that it, it doesn't look good that you can just walk around town with a drink in your hand and nobody stops them.
Sorry, I was just going to mention, we had the Gateway Cities Cog here a few weeks ago and had some really good interaction with Gilbert Saldate. He's the Cogs homeless initiative leader. And so I was hoping to connect on a call, hopefully in the next few weeks with you, since you work so much with the homeless population in town with Jocelyn. He wants to try to get additional services from L.A. County over here and has connected with a number of locations throughout L.A. County, some just in Bell Gardens and Bell that might be able to provide services onsite on a regular basis to help take some of that load off of your crew and be able to provide additional services in conjunction with what you're doing. So just wanted to give you a heads up that I'll be reaching out about that in the next couple of weeks with you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Chatted with Jamie. We figured out what the issue was. It was more of just messing with the setting. So hopefully, no more echo tonight. But definitely look for the feedback and we'll continue to improve the A V system.
No, we don't want feedback. That was our problem.
Poor choice of words. You got me there. So visitor-driven revenues. Last week, I sent out an email to Council. July visitor-driven revenues, T O T right now is down 6.6% for July. But again, I mentioned in the video, we've got a few late payers for whatever reasons this month, so we're following up with those operators. And I expect, once we get payment, July T O T should match of last year's. Ad tax was up 11.7%, and that was really driven by general fund admissions tax because the harbor and harbor use fees and harbor admissions tax were relatively flat compared to last year. Cross-channel visitors were down 4.5% for July. And then nightly moorings, I already reported this, but I'll provide a little more context. They're down 2.8%. Noran stopped me and was pretty surprised by how busy they've been. But looking at it, we had five weekends in July of '23 and four weekends this July. So the fact we're down a weekend and only down 2.8%, I think backs his thoughts that it was a busy July in the harbor. Early reporting for August, we have T O T, at least from the hotels that have reported early, up 21%. Again, we had that tropical storm last year, so I do expect the numbers to be high. But it'll be difficult to see how much, you know, the true comparison is. And similarly, nightly moorings for the month were up 22.8%. But again, they were definitely impacted last year due to the tropical storm. Other than that, finance is focused on the audit and I'll have auditors on island sometime next month.
Right. Questions? Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It seems to be festival month. On September 7th, last weekend, we had our legacy event, the 62nd Annual U.S. Outrigger Championship, otherwise known as the Catalina Crossing, which is thrown by SCORA, which is the Southern California Outrigger Race Association. This year was one of their larger participated events with over 70 canoes racing from Newport to Avalon on Saturday and Avalon back to Newport on Sunday. Top teams from Tahiti, Hawaii, Nevada, Northern and Southern California competed. Our own team, which included our own fireman, George Hernandez, completed the race. The event had over 1,200 competitors, approximately 600 friends and family who came to the island as well, with over 70 chase and support ports in our harbor. This event is a big financial impact on our community on an off-season shoulder weekend. So we're really appreciative. Plus, SCORA gave over $4,000 to local nonprofit programs here in our community. So we'd like to give a big thank you to SCORA, which is Billy, Bud, Kelly and Josh from SCORA for all their hard work to make an event like this happen and to keep coming back year in, year out. This past Monday, the City and Love Catalina presented our first Mexican Independence Day celebration. It started with Father Dario doing a mass, reminding us of the importance of loving each other as a community, followed by Senor Steve Hall, who talked about the importance of the Independence Day. Grupo de, group, group, my Spanish, I got to come take the class. Grupo de Ballet de Arbeja gave a cultural show of multiple regions performed by over 30 local dancers. We ended the night with sinfontera, playing northern music to dance to. Our Hispanic residences are such a vital part of our Avalon community and the City and Love Catalina were happy to make the celebration of their culture and the importance of the day happened. So Happy Mexican, Happy Mexican Independence Day, Viva Mexico. Starting this Friday, the Catalina Art Association is having their art festival on Front Street. It runs over three days, Thursday, Fridays, it runs over four days, excuse me, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This year, Lola and her team have over 60 vendors selling over the three days. Come down, support local artists, as well as enjoy a variety of different vendors from art to jewelry to clothing. Also, Monday, September 23rd, the War Here on the Water event is happening. It is a sport fishing tournament that helps our military heroes heal from mental anguish of war. They will have a celebration dinner and the Green Pier from 5:00 to 9:00 P.M. If you see one of these brave men or women, make sure to thank them for their service. Thursday, September 26th, there will be a vaccine clinic sponsored by Vons held at the parish hall at the Catholic Church between 9:00 A.M. and 2:30 P.M. So please stop by and get your flu shots and your updated COVID shots on that day as well. Again, that's September, Thursday, September 26th, between 9:00 A.M. and 2:30 P.M. Also, next Thursday starts the Catalina Film Festival. The fest runs over four days, Thursday through Sunday. All films will be shown either here in the chamber or at the Casino Theater. Locals can pick up free tickets on Wrigley Stage either on Wednesday or Thursday. All you need to do is show your subsidy card. So if you have your subsidy card, you get a free pass to the film festival. Also, don't miss out on the Catalina Island Filmmaker Spotlight on Sunday from 1:30 to 3:30 here in the city chamber. This year's spotlight is Avalon's own Alex Moran, who produced, directed, wrote the script and wrote the music for his feature film, Tomorrow, You Pretty Ghost, which also has the lead character in it is Evie Burega, who is also a local kid. For more information, go to catalinafilm.org.
What date was that?
That's on Sunday. That's not this Sunday, the following Sunday. Any more questions? Thank you.
Busy, busy. Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Assemblymember Josh Lowenthal and his team visited the island, as you all know, on Friday, September 6th, I believe. We got a tour of the Edison plant together, got a good presentation by them, and I was able to take them up to the Pebbley Beach landfill to show them the status of our current landfill and talk about the future capital project, which was a great opportunity. Later in the afternoon, he was able to meet with Catalina Island Health and the broadband team, as well as Love Catalina. Speaking of the Pebbley Beach landfill project, I, with the help of Devon, of course, I've created a webpage dedicated to the project. So it's cityofavalon.com/pbl. I plan to use it as a mechanism to share the most, the latest and greatest updates on the project, where we're at with it. There are some preliminary designs on the site optimization planned for that project. And then as far as code enforcement, they, I wasn't here at the last council meeting, so for the month of August, they responded to 40 animal calls for service, responded to three building code violations, nine public nuisance abatement follow-ups, 37 emergency calls for service for traffic control, issued 20 red tags for abandoned property, 287 citations. And they're, it really focused over the next week or two to ship several abandoned carts and vehicles off the island with the help of Jamie and Public Works. So that's super exciting. I had a kickoff meeting with Owens, the reverse vending machine operator, and confirmed with them, they are able to issue an N F C card. So I think there will be a mechanism for folks that don't have a smartphone or aren't comfortable with a smartphone to use the reverse vending machine. So we're continuing to work on that, but I just wanted to share the good news with you all. And then as far as I T manager recruitment, we have a conditional job offer that was accepted. The candidate's in backgrounds right now. So hopefully, by the next council meeting, I'll be able to share with you all a little bit more about the candidate. So thank you.
Good. Any questions? No, it's all good news, all good stuff.
Okay, I think that's everybody. So thank you, Council. Good evening. Just wanted to report out that we have no items for the Planning Commission for their agenda tomorrow night, so there'll be no Planning Commission meeting in September. The, as I think Council is aware, we've completed the Crescent Hillside project, but while Arizona drilling and blasting was on island, we took advantage and parlayed another pending project and use, are using them currently, got them to stay for a project that was within the budget. It's the Bermuda Trail hillside stabilization. So as you go up the Bermuda Trail where that is bulging out underneath the road, they're going to be able to do the drilling and boring for us to get that stabilized and that fixed. This is a much shorter, we're looking at a two to three week fix for that. It'll shore up that hillside, protect that roadway and protect that trail. So again, just want to thank Bob Greenlaw, taking advantage while we had the professionals on island to convince them to stay a little bit longer. Jamie, I don't know if we have the photos, if we can throw, just wanted to show Council the photos of the, we had the van, one of the two vans wrapped for Circuit. We wanted to make sure they all, all the vehicles matched. So this is the van. As we scroll through this, you can see that they did a great job, I think, of wrapping that van to make sure that it matches our gem vehicles. They will come back soon and wrap the other van for us. But if you see this one out there, it's not a new vehicle. We just finally got around to getting them over here to get the wraps placed on that vehicle. So we're excited about that. We're also excited about that our plan to have our own printer in-house to do our signs will also put us in a position that we can actually print these wraps going forward and just have the individual come over and put them on rather than having to buy the wraps. We can print those. So as we go down the road and change them out and come up with new designs and/or advertising, we'll be able to take care of that.
Can we do a little side business?
I'm sorry?
Can we do a little side business? If I wanted to wrap my car, I could contract with the city.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have those requests.
Kevin, can't we, should be able to generate some revenue somehow, right? Besides taxes, right?
Sure. And then briefly, I just wanted to mention that last night was the, we've partnered with Steve Hall. Dave Hart mentioned him earlier. So Steve Hall is running adult Spanish classes at a very cheap price here. We've, we partnered with him. He's using Council chambers. And part of our deal is we have eight city employees and/or staff that are participating out of, we had 18 people there last night, I think, which was great to see. So it's adult Spanish classes. I'm not sure what level it is. It's a level much higher than what I thought it was.
It's intermediate.
It's at least intermediate.
I was like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll have to catch up, Mary and I. But you know, I just want to thank Steve. I mean, this is a great opportunity. We have rolled this into part of our, the training and education program we have for staff. So we're covering those costs for staff. So I'm very appreciative that we had that many people that are participating. It just allows us to serve the residents better, I believe. The composition or compensation study is progressing. We will, we've met with a contractor. They're working on getting the information to be able to present to our staff. So we will be meeting hopefully the first week of October with all the members of the bargaining units and rolling out the methodology that they're using of what cities they're using, why they're using those particular cities to keep everybody informed and answer any questions that any of our employees might have. And then I just wanted to give a brief agenda of where we're at with future agenda items coming up because we've been trying to get these in front of you. So on October 1st, which is, I believe, the next council meeting, we'll have a chamber presentation. And then just speaking, Jim's here, speaking in the chamber. I just wanted to thank them for their efforts this last weekend. It just felt like a very special weekend with the Susan G. Komen Walk and Paddle and the ABBA concert to end the night, perfect weather, everybody in town. It just felt a little different. It was, it was a great weekend. Just wanted to thank the chamber for their involvement with that. for their involvement with that. And on October first, we also hope to present to Council our assessment of any sidewalk vending additional locations. We'll get a chance to walk with Dave Hart, Chief and I will walk on Front Street Crescent from the Mall all the way to the casino to see, you know, and report back to Council on those options. Then looking, reminding everybody, we've moved the ten-fifteen meeting to ten-twenty-two, and then on the ten-twenty-two meeting, we'll have an appeal of, that's been filed, of the Planning Commission's decision regarding the hotel project at three-oh-one Beacon will be in front of you, and then landlord-tenant regulation discussion will be in front of you at that meeting, and Scott Campbell will be present to handle landlord-tenant discussion. So we'll have all that information for you at that time. And then finally, I just want to announce that the medical cannabis application is posted on the city website, and that app, all, any applications will be taken through December sixteenth at one P.M. is the cutoff, and then at that date, we'll be presenting those to Council. Any questions?
No, that's good.
On the appeal, I noticed they took the story polls down. Is that part of something that we'll need to be able to see? Do they need to put those back up before the appeal is heard, or?
Only if Council needs them back up to get a perspective on those, but it's not changing the story polls and the story poll height, but the, the issues on the appeal will be, you know, presented to you and then what, for Council, what they, you can decide and consider at that time.
Okay.
But yeah, if you would like those back up.
I didn't know if it was, I mean, I watched part of the hearing, so I don't know if that was part of what we would be looking at. If it is, that's probably something that should be back up, just for the sake of being able to visualize the height of the building. I don't, I can't, I know that some of what they originally approved had changed in terms of the scope and size of where the building was going to end up, so.
Right.
I didn't know if the height was part of that decision or not.
Yeah, he said the height came down four feet, and then the back of it came in fourteen.
Yeah, he made some adjustments on that, but really it's, I think the, the coverage area of the building and the setbacks were the major issues on the appeal, but if you, if Council wants the, the story polls, I can talk to the property owner or the contractor to see if we can get those put back up, so you can get your perspective back.
I think.
I'll talk to them on that.
Yeah, if they, that'd be great, thank you.
Do we have a city attorney on board?
Yes, we do, and just to remind everyone that the Cal Cities Conference is in Long Beach this year, so please sign up for that. Also RSVP to our event for Thursday night, and I will be there October twenty-second. I will try and get that memo with options for you on tenant rights to you well before that meeting, so that you can review that in advance of that council meeting.
Right.
That's all I got tonight.
All right, Council members.
I'll go ahead, mine is quick. I attended the cog dinner with a couple of council members, as well as the fundraiser for Senator Lena Gonzalez and Assemblymember Lowenthal, and we also had a very successful Susan G. Coman Walk and Paddle this last Saturday, but I'll let Jim and Gail touch a little bit more on that, and that was it for me this week.
I've got nothing.
I went to my first cog meeting, and that was, that was really interesting. I didn't know exactly what it was all about, so it was, it was very cool to, to attend that and listen to different people's perspectives and problems in different cities, and then I'm going to be taking Lisa's place on a meeting over town, so that was good to get my feet wet there. Let's see, I did the nine-eleven stair climb with the first responders, with the firefighters, and I was so impressed that they're, they had full gear going up there, and I don't know how many times they did it, but I bailed after a little bit, and my thighs were killing me the next day. I walk a lot, I just don't do stairs, that's a way different way to use your muscle. I went to ABBA, it was awesome, but before I went to ABBA, I volunteered for the Lions Club for the Brew Fest out at Two Harbors that day. It was very interesting, it was raining and overcast and all that kind of stuff, but there were tons of people out there, and there was a silent auction, and I'm told that they raised way more money than they thought that they were going to, so it was a very, very good year, so our kids should be looking forward to some good scholarships and boost to some programs, so I love that. Looking forward to the art festival, and they're, Dave, they're artists, not vendors. But yeah, that's about it for me. Thanks.
So I also attended the Gateway Cities Conference for both days, some really great discussions, and it was interesting hearing the feedback from the attendees. It ended up being about fifty people from throughout the South Bay, Long Beach area, and was really thankful to all of them, so I attend that meeting eleven times a year on the mainland, and they all realized finally when they come, everyone hear, oh, this is what you have to do to get to and from and be able to do all these things. Transportation was a fun and exciting topic while we were here, so that was interesting, but really thankful to all of them for coming, and it sounds like they're going to plan to do the same next year as well, so it's, it's a fantastic thing to be a part of, and it's helped us in a number of ways. I'm super thankful for their staff and their team to, to be able to support the city in addition to our city staff. Attended the dinner with Councilmember De La Rosa for Josh Lowenthal and Lena Gonzalez as well, and got a chance to chat with them, and also had the meeting with everybody at the top side that we did the, the day, the week before, and was really thankful to Josh Lowenthal and his staff especially, they've been super helpful the last couple of weeks, have been having discussions with them regarding play preschool. Because of certain requirements, they haven't, they're not able to open this week, which was their goal, so we were able to get them in touch with the Department of Social Services, and hopefully it sounds like there's a chance they may be opening if everything goes okay this week by next week or the week after at the latest, so thankful to Clayton for his help with that. And I will be absent for the first meeting in October, and wanted to just say thanks to Mary for attending Gateway Cities Cog in my stead for that one, I'm excited for you to get to do that. And then we'll be attending the Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach as well, so thank you, that's what I got. So.
SCAG, SCAG Broadband, I don't know if that got approved.
What?
There was a, so SCAG, we were up for one of three cities to be able to be provided technical support with a grant from the CPUC, and I believe it got approved by the SCAG Board in the most recent meeting.
I think it did.
Yeah, so we're one of three cities that's getting funded for a grant. I was trying to just do the like estimating math on what I thought that would be a value of, and I want to say it's in between like eighty hun, eighty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars worth of background on broadband service, connectivity, coverage, next steps for planning, possible grants to go after, so super excited, thankful to SCAG for that. Please give them our thanks when you see them.
Okay. I did the scare, the stair climb, and need to tell you in advance that next year, Chief Allegria is not going to be able to go on vacation on that day. Put it, put it on your calendar, you're walking those stairs, dude. Anyway, it was awesome. I went, I was one of four people that attended the Conservancy Open Forum on the eleventh. They want to continue to have open discussions, but there, there were only four of us. There was a little discussion about the deer and the hunting season, and then there was a question about the road to Ben Weston, which they're, they're pretty adamant because that's a riparian habitat area that that really would never go in, won't be put in. And I saw Lena Gonzalez and Josh, and the dad, Alan Lowenthal was there too, so I didn't stay as long because I had friends in town or family in town, but it was all very nice, so, and last night was wonderful. There was, the Lions were too busy to get food, so I wasn't able to get food, but we enjoyed everything else. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity to, for people to talk on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jim Luchahun from Love Catalina Island, just wanted to hit on a couple of points, some of which you guys have already mentioned briefly, but I would like to thank the city and all of the residents and visitors who enjoyed our final concert of the season, the exceptional tribute to ABBA on Wrigley Stage, and I'd like to thank Rotary in particular for running the Beer Garden. In addition to what you've already heard about the upcoming weekend art fest, don't forget that Thursday night, we kicked that off with an art festival mixer, and you can register to attend that at lovecatalina.com. We are about to host our annual marketing conference, and this year we will have presentations by LA Tourism, Cal Travel, Visit California, Kind Traveler, and from our advertising agency, Sixty-Two Above, with a look back at what we've completed in the last year and what we'll be probably bringing forward, and get some feedback from the room on that. I've put flyers over here for the marketing conference registration, and that is open to all who are interested in attending, and of course, we want you from Council. That's October seventeenth, if I didn't say it, beginning at eleven-thirty A.M.
When we're at the League Conference. Yeah, oh dang, that's a bummer. Well, I think all of us are going to be.
Yeah, we're not here.
Oh, shoot. Well, in your inboxes are invitations unknowingly. I am just back and two members of my staff from Cal Travel's annual summit, and heard a variety of excellent presentations there, including that statewide hotel demand is kind of leveling off and looking much like it did in two thousand and nineteen. The good news is two thousand and nineteen was actually a very strong year, but certainly not what twenty-one, twenty-two were as during the post-pandemic recovery. And one of the main citations about why that is going on is that many U.S. travelers are choosing to travel abroad based on the positive exchange rates and low airfares that is actually competing with our domestic travel destinations like Catalina. You probably know, but there was supposed to be the second of our series of kayak cleanups held this morning, and due to the rough water and a low pre-registration, that has been moved now to Monday, the twenty-third. So if you want to kayak and help improve our marine and land environment, that's a good chance, and thank you to the Harbor Department for being willing to reset that date and participate in helping us get some large debris off of the beach. And we are about to have one of our annual food handlers training. This will be with Germstar, and it will be October twenty-eighth in the Founder's Room at US Bank, so for food handlers working in restaurants, we always try and have those sorts of things. And then I'm going to ask Gail to join me with all the details on More Than Pink, because I think I'm past two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So Gail, you can get two minutes, he went over his, but what the heck.
I get my own two minutes, right?
Yes.
Welcome. Hi, guys, nice to see you, Gail from Catalina Island Health. I just wanted to provide you with an update on our recent and upcoming Catalina Island Health events. Over the weekend, as many of you know, we brought over the mobile mammogram unit, it was parked on Crescent Avenue from nine A.M. to five P.M. both Saturday and Sunday. This is the first time we were able to bring the unit here since the pandemic, and it was a huge success. Sixty-eight women were screened, yay. Most were local residents, but a few were visitors who also took advantage of, hey, I'm here, I might as well, I really need it. On Saturday, we were also part of the Susan G. Coman More Than Pink Walk. About forty people joined in the walk and helped raise awareness for breast cancer and funds for research via the Coman Foundation. On behalf of the Catalina Island Health team, we'd like to thank our island residents and visitors that were part of both events, and some of you are even in this room. Other special thanks go out to the Susan G. Coman Foundation, the City of Avalon, specifically Councilmember De La Rosa, Avalon Fire Department, Love Catalina, Alena Medical Imaging, Avalon Freight Services, Hotel Metropole, and Catalina Extreme Parasale. All of these entities helped make it such a successful weekend, and we're super grateful. Upcoming at the Health, at Catalina Island Health, we are starting a new monthly community health talk. The first one will be Saturday, October fifth, from eleven A.M. to twelve P.M. It will take place in the Hotel Metropole conference room. It's one of our regular visiting specialists, urologist Dr. Purley, he will be presenting information on regaining bladder and bowel control. This affects a lot more people than you'd think, so you should join us and get educated. And also excited to share that in conjunction with the City of Avalon, we're bringing back the Resource Fair. If you remember, it was in April, it was very successful. It will be October twenty-fourth, Thursday, at the Community Church from nine A.M. to two P.M. Over fifteen different entities are going to be here to offer information, guidance, medical enrollment, and much more, and there will be also two legal workshops presented by the Western State College of Law that will happen in the city council chambers that same day. We're finalizing all the details, so look for a flyer and social media posts coming out soon, and a special shout out to Councilmember De La Rosa once again, and Assistant City Manager Jocelyn Francis for their efforts and partnership in bringing this back to the community. Thanks.
Well, you talked fast in that two minutes. Good job, you covered a lot of area. Anybody else? Public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. I am here to introduce myself. I am Dr. Ennett Morton, and I am running to be your next Long Beach Community College trustee in District Four. I am a first-generation college graduate with bachelor degree from Cal Poly Pomona and an MBA and doctorate in education from Pepperdine University. For the past decade, I have been a successful administrator at Pepperdine University, at UC Berkeley, and now at Cal State University in Long Beach. I've also served the community on the Long Beach City College Thirty-Million-Dollar Grant Advisory Group, the Long Beach Commu, the Long Beach Commission on Youth and Family, and the California Cultural Historic Endowment Board. I am running for the college trustee seat to ensure that every student in our community has access to quality education and quality job training opportunities. I am endorsed by Los Angeles County Supervisor Janice Hahn, State Senator Lena Gonzalez, the majority of the LBCC Board, including Herlinda Chico, who is now running for city council. I am, I would be honored to represent this community, and for more information, you can visit Ennett, that's E-N-N-E-T-T-E, Morton, M-O-R-T-O-N, for longbeach.com, and you can also find out how to contact me there. Thank you, and I look forward to speaking to you soon.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming to the island.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Do you want to point out that Dr. Morton and her husband also frequent the island, and I hear you're an avid scuba diver, so thank you guys for, for being here often and looking forward to this, hope the, the election goes well for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other public comment? Go to the consent calendar.
Item number one on our consent calendar are warrants seeking approval of total expenditures for August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four through September sixth, twenty-twenty-four, totaling one million ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Item two is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to enter into the volunteer fire assistance grant with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection for twenty thousand dollars. Item three, adopt an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter ten dash two-point-four-oh-two-B of the Avalon Municipal Code, use fees for harbor cruise ship passengers, and adoption of findings under the California Environmental Quality Act. Item four, declare vehicles and equipment as surplus. And item five, authorize the city manager or his designated negotiate and execute a contract with Rainy Day Roofing, Inc. to replace the roof of the Harbor Master Building for not to exceed some of one hundred thousand dollars as budgeted in the city's fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five capital improvement project, or planned project number two-oh-seven-zero-one-four, account one-oh-four-seven-zero-dash-six-five-four-seven.
Council, do you, would you like to make a motion or bring any of these forward?
I'll move to approve items one through five on consent.
I'll second.
You're moved and seconded, call for the vote.
Oh.
You gotta tap it.
I was waiting for it to pop up, it's like, oh, I gotta wake it up. I forgot to mention I'm taking Spanish too. I forgot to mention I'm taking the Spanish class too.
Awesome. Bueno.
Oh, my God. That was good.
We're going to be bilingual up on the podium, right? Wouldn't that be cool? Si.
We'll see.
I know that one.
Alrighty.
Ay, Dios mio.
Never mind, you don't want to hear what I was going to say in Spanish. Okay, I'm sorry, general business?
General business, item six, general business, building service division request for proposal. So at this. So at this time, we're asking council authorized city staff to publish a request, RFP, for consultant services to provide building division services and on-call engineering and construction management services.
So my question is, I have a question. Does, what is this, does this do anything with John Gilbert's position with his, because it seems like some of this stuff is, some of this stuff he does and?
Yeah, so, good evening. Yeah, so currently, we do employ one full-time building official. He, more and more over the last year and a half that I've been here, has been, because of his subject matter expertise and knowledge, technical trade knowledge, he's been used more and more in public works for public works types projects, overseeing small facility projects. His electrician background has been critical over the last year or so. And so, you know, I've been working with Jackie and Dave and doing an analysis in public works and seeing how we could maybe better leverage and utilize his expertise and knowledge to get some capital projects and things over the finish line. And so with that, would be looking at contracting out building-related services, you know, everything from plan reviews to inspections, and not just for private development projects. You know, we have some big ones that are on the horizon, but also for our capital projects. And with that, looking at on-call services for construction management. So it's kind of a bunch of different things that we're looking at finding, trying to find a consultant on to help leverage city staffing and resources so we can make sure we continue helping private developers get their projects over the finish line, as well as some of our own capital projects. So that's the intent of going out to RFP and seeing what's out there.
So he'd be on the, this person would be on the mainland most of the time and just here two days a week for four hours?
Yeah, so the intent is to have them be here Tuesdays and Thursday mornings in the office at the front counter, helping with plan reviews and permits. And then in the afternoon, scheduling inspections and following up with any code enforcement violations. And, you know, in our housing element, for example, we have like the rental inspection program that we need to, you know, get started. And, you know, depending on the future, short-term vacation rentals, helping out with inspections. Yeah.
So I'm confused. So what role does Sagecrest play? Doesn't Sagecrest do plan checking and all that stuff and Kent Kelly be here and be at the counter? Why do we have to hire somebody else?
They're planning as compared to a CBO or chief building official that will be in the field and review actual construction projects and enforcement and enforcement of building code violations.
Oh, so they don't have anyone in their, in their company that could do that?
Well, we were looking to have that separated a little bit. I mean, this is really replacing, I mean, Mayor, you asked, you know, does this impact John? It does. I mean, we're looking to free up John for what we're using him for so much with the public works and therefore get somebody else in here that's off island. We also think it's an advantage to have somebody that is not living here doing building inspections and citations and violation inspections and issuing those. And that's what this is. There would be an element of an office work doing plan reviews on the smaller projects that John does have to review currently, but that's just tying him down in the office when we're also pulling him in other directions.
Okay.
Is there a motion to authorize the city staff?
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to publish a request for proposal, RFP, for consultant services to provide building division services and on-call engineering and construction management services.
I'll second. And then the only thing I would ask is just that if we can compare what on-call from a firm versus looking at eventually if we need to getting actually someone on staff. But I appreciate the reasoning why you were saying an overtown person may be what better to have, too, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second.
Vote?
All ayes.
Okay, item number seven is the Five Corners Pedestrian Improvement Project bid results. Mr. Greenlaw is here to discuss that.
Okay, this item addresses, oh, good evening first. Sorry, council. This item addresses the award of the Five Corner Construction Contract. Remember that we went out to bid, and now we received the bids. So something interesting happening with this bid. We had a sixty-day bid solicitation period, which is a fairly, you know, lengthy period for us. And we had several contractors show interest early on, and one group was, you know, highly involved in inquiring about the details, brought over subcontractors, so that we thought we were gonna get a solid bid from that contractor. But on bid day, we received no bids and bids, the bid period closed. Otherwise, we would've had to extend it before that bid closed. So we did receive one bid later in the day, which was very interesting. And so what, in discussing it with that contractor, we extended the bid deadline one week because they were having, it seemed like there was correspondence, they were having problems with the subcontractors that were on the mainland getting all of their details into the general contractor, prime contractor, so that they could finish up and compile the bid. When we did that, we normally, we closed the bids at three o'clock. On that day, because we extended it a week, we wanted to be able to get to council with the results, thought that we were gonna get good results, and we had changed the time to eleven. And the contractor didn't pick that up, even though it's on it, it's in writing, they signed that, didn't pick that up, so he actually came in later, but the bid period closed. So it's kinda interesting. So that puts us in a position that we received no bids, okay? So then we go, how do we cure this? Is there some solution to cure this? Otherwise, we need to go back out to bid again another sixty days. So that puts us way out there. So again, we reflect on what our municipal code allows us to do. And under our purchasing policy, Avalon Municipal Code, Section three dash four point two oh six E, award of contracts, says contractor shall be awarded by the council to the lowest responsible bidders, except as otherwise provided in this section. If no bids are received, the project may be performed by the employees, the city, by force account or negotiated contract without further complying with this section. So that's where we're at right now. So the bids that we did receive were double the estimate that we put together. We had some expectations that the bids were gonna be high. One, it's interesting to note, though, that twenty-five percent of that inflated cost was really the utilities portion, because they're responsible. There's some, a lot of utility work on this project, and there are some upgrades to the utilities that actually the city's gonna be performing the work with their contractor, but it's the utilities' responsibility to pay for that. And at a previous meeting here, just this last meeting, you authorized us to, for our city manager to negotiate that, further that contract, that agreement we have with the utilities. So what we think.
You're talking about with Edison?
Yes, yes, that's the main one, okay? And they're getting a lot of bang for their buck, too, in this, so. Because we're upgrading gas, water, electric, and just everything goes through this intersection, of course, right? Besides the traffic underground, it goes through there, a high line, the gas lines, the line, the high line of water that goes up to the tanks, you know, it all passes through this intersection. And if we're gonna redo the road, that's why our partners at Edison and all the rest of utilities, they wanted to upgrade their facility because, you know, just like on some of our other streets, things are not in very good shape in some of the underground utilities. And why we have this opportunity, it's the time when you open up and you have the excavators and the contractor, everybody's there, you know, it's, you get the best bang for the buck, even though that everybody kinda cringes a little bit as we have that price tag, okay? So we think that that's gonna help us be successful in a piece of it. Also, if we're able to negotiate with a contractor, I have discussed it with Jim Huff and Jordal Contracting, that there's some things in here we think that we can modify the scope, then still keep within the intent of the project and make, you know, an excellent project, but to get it, the costs aligned with our budget, okay? And realize, this project is just the start of a big vision for this city hall campus and what's happening around here with housing, workforce housing on both the city and the island companies' sites. It is where everybody passes through, our school, children pass through here, you pass through here to go to the hospital, so all our services. And, you know, it's really that gonna be that sense of place type project. We do it, this is just the start of it, though. And so we wanna make sure that we keep that momentum going. As always, you know, this check-in, and we gotta keep that momentum going to get all of those projects done. And what we're asking tonight, though, is not for you to make a decision on the dollars on the project, because if we're gonna bring that back and negotiate. Since, we're just saying, delegate that authority for the city manager to negotiate, you know, the terms of a contract so that we can't have a further discussion, okay? With good numbers in front of us.
We've had to do this before.
Yes.
I think there's other times you don't get bids, too. Okay, so if any questions or comments? If not?
No, we're just gonna, this is just, we're just gonna authorize the city manager to negotiate with Jordal, right?
That's correct. And then come back.
Then we'll be back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to make the affirmative finding that no bids were received by the bid deadline. Authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Jordal Construction, Inc. per Avalon Municipal Code, Section three dash four dot two zero six.
I'll second.
Second and call for the vote. Item number eight.
Okay, item number eight is, this is an item that we were asked to do some research on and collect data and bring it back to council regarding adult-use cannabis feasibility discussion. Devon Hart, who's put a lot of work into this, is here to present that.
Good evening, city council. Let me just get this going. All right, good evening, city council. Devon Hart, management analyst. As city manager said tonight, we're going to go through our adult-use feasibility discussion as requested by members of the city council. Just a quick overview of the legislative timeline and kinda how we got to this moment. In November nineteen ninety-six, the state of California legalized medical cannabis through Proposition two fifteen. It's also referred to as the Compassionate Use Act. November eighth, twenty sixteen, twenty years later, Proposition sixty-four legalized adult use, or also known as recreational cannabis. And then in June twenty seventeen, Governor Jerry Brown kinda took the existing medical regulation framework and melded it together with an adult-use medical frame, an adult-use policy. And that's how we came out up with our Medicinal and Adult-Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. Something that's super significant about this act is it preserved jurisdictional authority to establish any level of regulations that jurisdiction deemed is appropriate to regulate their local cannabis commercial industry. So each jurisdiction can decide whatever they want to in terms of developing their legislative framework, which is awesome, because no jurisdiction is the same and no community looks the same. So it's really great that the Marcuse Act did that for us. So the Department of Cannabis Control, Cannabis Regulation, specifically Section fifteen three one one, Section E actually prohibits transportation of cannabis by waterway aircraft. However, there's a special carve-out for Catalina Island that you can see in Section P of the regulation, what says that transportation of cannabis and cannabis products can be conducted via waterway to licensees located on Catalina Island. So that was a great little carve-out that was made for us, and I think Mayor Marshall and Councilmember Ole Olson at the time actually worked at the state level to engage with them to build out that carve-out for us. And that's how we were able to get our current medical business licensed and operable under the state legislation. In contrast to the state legislation, the, on the federal level, there's the Federal Controlled Substance Act, which identifies cannabis as a Schedule One illegal drug. The act doesn't make any exemption for cannabis to be used for medical purpose. Cannabis is Schedule One, and that's kinda the end of the story on the federal level. However, there's the Robuchar Far Amendment, which actually isn't a law, it's an amendment that's integrated into our federal budget system that was adopted, it was first introduced in two thousand and one, but later adopted into an omnibus spending bill in December of twenty fourteen. And this amendment actually prohibits the Department of Justice, the DEA, from spending any funds on actions that would be designed to interfere with state medical cannabis law. So it doesn't legalize medical cannabis, but it takes away the tool that the federal government would use to prosecute or investigate or otherwise interfere with the legal state medical process. And I think I provided in the staff report at the bottom of page two the full text of that amendment. This is vitally important to the City of Avalon. It's been included in every adopted budget since twenty fourteen, but it's the thing that I mentioned earlier that allows our medical cannabis business to operate outside of our state territorial waters. It's entirely federal, federally controlled waterways between us and the mainland. So even though the state regulation that we went, watched through earlier does not distinguish between medical and adult use, the Robuchar Far Amendment is really specific in providing protections to medical cannabis-related businesses only, not adult use. And as I mentioned earlier, there are no federal protections, exemptions, or guidelines to allow for the adult use or recreational commercial cannabis industry.
In Avalon?
Anywhere. If you're in a federal jurisdiction, the federal doesn't recognize adult use at all.
Okay.
Or doesn't recognize any protections for adult use at all, excuse me. So the federal penalties for possession of a Schedule One drug, just possession, are outlined there and are outlined on the screen for you, and they're articulated in the staff report as well. But they range from a misdemeanor with potential up to a year in jail to a thousand dollars in fines, all the way up to twenty-five hundred dollars in fines and three years in prison. The penalties for possession of cannabis with intent to sell or distribute are based upon the quantities in your possession, and those are provided for you, again, on the screen, as well as within the staff report, but they range between a felony punishable by up to five years in prison and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in fines to four-million dollars in fines and ten years to life in prison, depending on how much cannabis you have in your possession at that time. Now, there is, introduced on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, so just recently, the DOJ and DOE introduced a proposed rule change that would move cannabis, recognizing the medicinal benefit that cannabis has, moving cannabis from a Schedule One to Schedule Three Controlled Substance. So it kinda would put cannabis in the same category as Tylenol with codeine or testosterone, anabolic steroids, ketamine. However, it's still a controlled substance. So those penalties that you saw in the two previous slides are, would be slightly reduced, but only slightly. It would still be, if you have possession with intent to sell, that would still be a felony, even if cannabis moves to a Schedule Three drug.
I can't believe they can compare cannabis to ketamine.
Well, Tylenol with codeine.
Yeah, I mean, any of those, kinda, it just kinda rhymed the case, that's why I said that one.
So city staff really interpret this as there's no viable way to transport adult-use cannabis to Catalina Island without violating federal law and/or risking those federal penalties that we discussed earlier. that we discussed earlier. The harbor master has been in contact with the Coast Guard regarding this issue, and the Coast Guard agreed absolutely that it is illegal. Also noted that the Coast Guard doesn't need a reason, or reasonable suspicion even, to board and search a vessel. Anecdotally, we can tell you the previous cannabis operator, their vessel was boarded a number of times, and it was only because that they were performing legal, permitted medical delivery, that there were, there was no, no issue. So, uh, the Ca-, uh, the Coast Guard has opined through the, the harbor master that if it was adult use, that would not be the case.
It was what?
Adult use, or recreational.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, do you guys want me to keep going? Or do you guys have any questions at this point?
I'm good right now, sure.
All right, so then, I thought it'd be great to go back to talk about the development of our local ordinance. I got to go back and watch all those, those meetings, and I can tell you, we were all so young then. The Cannabis Code as we know it, ordinance 1,163-17, or Chapter 5-20 of the Municipal Code, was adopted on November 7th, 2017, after four meetings of the city council, where the council really took the time to examine our options, your options, and decide what was best for the community. I thought it was really great to go back and see the council kind of struggle, like, so thoughtfully with balancing between preserving the nature of our community and Avalon, and the potential impact that a, a, a commercial cannabis business could have in our really small town, with, uh, with the desire to serve a medical need for people in Avalon that really needed medical cannabis. There was lots of compassion and lots of really great discussion during those meetings. So the city council took steps to minimize the potential impact of cannabis business in Avalon. A brick-and-mortar cannabis business must be located in the commercial zone or special commercial zone. The city council prohibited all signage on the exterior of the building. They didn't want people to be able to walk by and see a marijuana leaf on the window. They wanted to make sure the operation stayed really discreet. They required extensive odor control devices to be installed, so that way no neighbors would be affected. They required extensive security measures, including 24-hour video surveillance system, as well as a uniformed guard to be on site. And they prohibited smoking in public places. And we also limited the total number of medical cannabis delivery service permits to just one. And the idea was that we, is kind of, I kept calling it a toe-in-the-water approach, to see what kind of impact it would have on the overall community. The ordinance provides the latitude for city council to go back within a year of operations and, and examine any potential effects, and make the determination to add additional cannabis license permits at that time. So the, in December 18th, 2018, we've talked about this timeline before, the city council issued a license, or intent to provide a license, a permit to a potential licensee. That permit holder began operations in July of 2019. In meetings between that time and our advisory measure in 2020, we had a number of discussions regarding potential cannabis tax, a local cannabis business tax. The city is able to assess a local cannabis business tax on cannabis sales. That would be in addition to sale, or, in addition to state excise tax. At that time, city council said absolutely not, this is medical cannabis, we do not want to tax it, we want to try and make this easier for the current cannabis operator as well. We discussed annual fees, city council declined to collecting any annual fees from the medical cannabis business operator. We just really wanted to give this kind of, the cannabis business a chance to kind of get going in Avalon. We also, at that time, had a smaller council than usual. We only had a mayor and three sitting council members, unfortunately due to the, the passing of Pam Albers. So when we were having these discussions about cannabis and question arose regarding potentially expanding the cannabis ordinance to include adult use, cannabis, or the city council directed staff to put together a couple of advisory measures on our March 3rd, 2020 ballot. The first advisory measure was, should the city of Avalon expand its current commercial cannabis ordinance for medical delivery only, to allow for adult recreational delivery sales within the city of Avalon? You had 58% of the community vote no against the expansion of the ordinance. The second measure we had on the ballot was Measure F, which asked, should the city council expand its current commercial cannabis ordinance to allow for a cannabis storefront or local dispensary within the city of Avalon, city limits? And the, the community responded with a 65% against that, that idea as well. So when to get, putting together what the potential impacts of cannabis could be, both at the community, like, within our community and then economic level, there's a myriad of factors to be considered. And arguably, we could spend a whole study session talking about each element. The first being the type of commercial cannabis facility. Would you, would the council be inclined to go for a storefront dispensary, or maybe to expand what we've got from medical delivery to include adult use delivery? Locations for consumption. Currently, 75% of the island's visitors are day-trippers or from a cruise ship. So if we were to expand our current cannabis ordinance to incorporate adult use, it'd be arguably a smaller fraction of just our local population and visitors that may be able to participate, without examining potential locations for consumption, because that, as I mentioned earlier, right now you're prohibited from smoking cannabis in public places. Locations for a brick-and-mortar commercial cannabis facility, as I mentioned, the, it's restricted to the commercial and special commercial zones. If the council would like to consider expanding options, reducing options, and it kind of speaks to like the, the nature of town, you know, do you want to prohibit a dispensary from being on Front Street, or is that your vision to have a dispensary on, on Front Street? That's just something to discuss if we're gonna expand. Additional costs of enhanced enforcement and additional administrative support to manage commercial cannabis regulations, as well as additional enforcement for regulation of the illicit cannabis market. I think that's something that every community really struggles with. Anecdotally, I've talked to a number of different cities, and it's something that their communities really struggle with, is robust and thriving illicit cannabis markets, and then going, trying to go down a legalized corridor, which is wrought with regulations and fees. So it's, the illicit market really does have a unfair advantage. So if we were to move forward, that would be something that would need to be tackled, is, is, how do we govern the illicit market? Is it, is it dogs at the Catalina Express, monitoring, walking up and down the lines as people board the boat? You know, kind of what does that look like? Additionally, if we expand the market, you're going to need more administrative staff as, and, and more code enforcement support. Effects on other areas of visitor-driven revenue. We've talked before about the, like, kind of like the, the charm and quaintness of Avalon, and the questions arose, if, you know, is a storefront cannabis business on, on the Front Street? We just barely built relationships with like Disney Cruise Lines. With, if we were to legalize a storefront business, would Disney maybe not want to consider Avalon as a port of call if that was something that we offered here? Which is a legitimate question, I think. And then lastly, the rate of taxation. Tax must be approved by a vote of our local voters. It could be an up-to-tax, so to give council the leeway to, to assess how the tax is working and bring it down. Anecdotally, we can, I look, looking back through what we, we talked to, about over the last five years or so, the city of Santa Barbara initially, when they opened up their cannabis business, or their cannabis, yes, their commercial cannabis industry, had an initial local business tax of 20%. But nearby Golita only had a local business tax of 5%. So where, in the first years of their cannabis operations, Santa Barbara didn't net any revenue, and Golita had a much more robust cannabis economy, Santa Barbara realized that 20% tax was not viable, and they had to kind of bring that tax down. And when we start to talk about taxes, they really start to add up in our, in our legalized market. You have your selling price of cannabis, and I just kind of throw out an example to give everyone an idea of, of what this, all these levels of taxes do to cannabis business. But you have your, your local, you have your selling price, you have your local business tax, so the, the city would be kind of the first bite of the apple in terms of taxation. Then the state comes in with the cannabis excise tax of 15%, and then grocery receipts, subject sales tax of 10, 10% is assessed. So you see your $100 cannabis purse just goes up to almost $140 after everyone gets their piece of tax. So, to give you guys an idea of what potential revenues could look like, we went through and we tried to find some comparable cities. All of my go-to comparable cities, and I know I included it in the staff report, a list of all the cities in the state of California, and if, what level they allow cannabis in their jurisdictions. So like, all of my go-tos, like Monterey, or Morro Bay, Solvain, Oceanside, Manhattan, or Redondo Beach, Del Mar, even like Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Tiburon, Pismo, they all prohibit all cannabis. I think it was kind of an interesting thing to look at when we were trying to find comparable cities, is I think that there was a sentiment, like, maybe we were the odd kids in the room with, with our prohibition of adult use, but really it is the majority of cities that don't prohibit any type of use of cannabis. So we, we used other metrics to call out cities as comparable, comparable cities. And if council has any cities that you'd like us to look at and consider, we've done a lot to research on a lot of them, so I might be able to have some information, otherwise I'd be happy to bring back more information. But here we are looking at the city of Santa Barbara. They have a population of 87, just over 87,000, annual visitors of 6.5 million. They limit their cannabis to just three retail storefronts. Their cannabis, local cannabis tax, after starting out at 20, they brought it down to 6%. And with three storefronts, and all the other details up there, you see that they have a local cannabis tax that they, they bring in of 1.2 million, 1.3 million. I included up there the taxable revenue, and you guys will see, as we get to the end, it's one of our revenue comparisons that we use, but of, because we assume everyone eats and drinks when they're on vacation, and even residents enjoy their local restaurants. So they bring in about $570 million in food and beverage revenue. City of Napa has about 78,000 people, 3.7 million annual visitors. They currently have nine retail storefronts, and have zero cannabis business tax. They're, although the taxable revenue they bring in is about $16 million, and they have $350 million in taxable food and beverage revenue. West Hollywood, which is comparable to city of Avalon in our geographic approximation, they're only 1.9 square miles, they have three, about 34,000 annual, excuse me, 34,000 residents, 22 million annual visitors. They have a really robust cannabis market. They have over 70 cannabis businesses, and it runs the gamut of adult-use medical consumption areas for smoking, vaping, and edibles, as well as consumption areas for edible only, and then delivery service. They have a local cannabis business tax of 7.5%. They bring in about $25 million in revenue, which I thought was really low, considering that they have 70 mil-, or, excuse me, 70 businesses, and they bring about 1.9% in local cannabis tax. Taxable revenue for food and beverage is at 600 million. South Lake Tahoe, 21,000 residents, 15 million annual visitors. Currently, they have seven retail storefronts. They have the largest per capita sales, they're at 201 of the cities we surveyed. They have a 6% local business tax, $16 million in taxable revenue, $1 million in actual local tax, and they bring in $174 million in food and beverage revenue. So I picked Lake, South Lake Tahoe, it's a seasonal destination, it's kind of remote, so that's where we were going when we initially picked that, picked that jurisdiction. And then when we started looking at the numbers, we were all scratching our heads, how are their cannabis sales so high? And you realize that it's, they're right on the border with the state of Nevada, which didn't legalize their cannabis industry until 2024. And if you check out where their dispensaries are, they do have a little cluster of them right there at the, the state border. So there are all these really interesting nuances which eat, with each city, and, and how their cannabis industry relates. So now we have the city of Avalon. We've got 4,000, we rounded up on all of our numbers. We have 4,000 year-round residents, a million visitors, say we're 2.9 square miles, including all of our incorporated terrain. Taxable revenue from food and beverage sales is right around $50 million a year. So that was our, our first, our revenue, our first revenue comparison. As I mentioned earlier, everyone eats and drinks when they go on vacation, so we thought that would be a really great benchmark to use. When we look at the other comparable cities, we realize the variation, or the percentage of food and beverage sales related to their cannabis sales only varies between a percentage point or two. It's 3.7 to 4.8% is, is the correlation. So it was, seemed like a close enough ratio that we could use it as a, a metric, a potential metric. So we rounded it up and called it 5%. So we took 5% of their, of our $48 million in food and beverage sales, that's how we derived that maybe there's a potential for $2.4 million in cannabis sales. Now, depending on the tax rate, and not accounting for increased administrative costs or code enforcement costs, at a 5% tax rate, that could be potentially $120,000 in revenue, 10% would be $240,000, and 15% would be $360,000. Do you guys have any questions about that analysis? How we got there? All right.
Well, I was, I was, I just had one question about the, the impact of the businesses, and you mentioned cruise ships. If we had a dispensary, then perhaps the cruise ship would not want to call on us?
Well, specifically, I was referring to Disney cruise ships. So, and it, I meant it more, and I apologize for using cruise ships as the example, that was probably a poor example. I was, I was meaning more of the, the folks that tend, that are on a Disney cruise, not necessarily the Disney cruise ships, but maybe you would see a drop-off in families coming to Catalina Island. Because we talk about Catalina Island as an island romance, and maybe even Katalina, but would those, like, areas of the market be negatively impacted by cannabis, a robust commercial cannabis? It's just a question for consideration, not a determination one way or the other.
Right, so my question was, you cited Santa Barbara as one of the cities of comparison, and they have cruise ships, so they also have dispensaries. So I just thought that was interesting that you included that in the staff report.
Yeah, that's exactly why we threw Can-, uh, Santa Barbara in there, is because it is one of our cruise ship comps.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment. I appreciate all of this research and whatever, but if it actually says there's no way it can get to Catalina, why do we continue the conversation?
Can I answer that? Because I brought this up.
Oh, I knew that.
I know, so, can I answer that?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to be able to talk to my fellow council people, people and mayor, and the community, to find out what the interest is in getting it. And I feel that if we just, we can lay the groundwork for it, it's not up to us to make it possible to come across the water. We can put that onus on the applicant. You know, other people can step forward and drive that program, and get it legal to cross the federal waters. The, the vote that we had was, is four years old. Things can change a lot in four years, so not really sure where everyone stands. I'm surprised there's not more people here, because it's kind of a, a hot-button issue.
Either way, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my main goal is to- Yeah, I mean, my main goal is to have just another tax, another revenue stream in this town that has zero impact on the town. It will not add cars, it will not have major floods of people adding to it, it will not have an effect on local housing, it will not have, put a strain on the infrastructure. And even if we don't have really anything to base it on, I don't think that some of the examples that you cited, you know, 1.9, 1.2, I mean, anything over a million bucks, it's not, you don't, nothing to sneeze at, you know? We can take a million bucks here and there, not a problem. So I just was hoping that we could see our way clear to amend the ordinance, lay the groundwork for anyone that would possibly be interested in tackling that hurdle and getting it going. And I travel a lot, we all go over town, there's, you see a green cross, you know what that is, right? So there's, you can be discreet about the whole thing, not a problem, and I would say not front street. But I would recommend that we have the sage crest, have an, add an agenda item for a discussion on the proposed ordinance too, because I feel that this is, the planning part is, it's part, it belongs to the planning department, not us. I mean, they should come up with recommendations, you know? But anyway, this was, I wanted to jump off and just find out what people feel. I mean, are people just adamantly opposed to this?
If I could-
Can I, I'm sorry, just real quickly, a couple things on what you just said. I would disagree that it has no negative impact on the city. I would just disagree with that from the standpoint that I have heard from a number of stakeholders, business members, community members that saw this on the agenda, that asked, is this really going to happen? I mean, this, I think it does have an impact. It does have an impact having cannabis stores in your front street. It does have an impact on family-friendly visitors. It will have an impact, I think, on, not the quality of visitor, but the, probably the majority of the visitors that might look at making a decision to come here that aren't currently coming here, or families that are coming here that might choose not to come here. I think it would have an impact on that. The second part with the illegality of getting it here, I think it puts the city in a very difficult position to say, we're going to legislate and provide an opportunity for a cannabis business to come here, when we know that if they have that product on their shelf, they couldn't have gotten it here legally. And we are to do what with that? Just say, oh, ignore it, good job? I mean, we know they cannot get that product and put it on their shelves legally. To say it's on them to figure it out-
Well, they would have to come to us for a license, and we could deny it because they can't have a legal way to get here.
But why would we have it?
So why would we even bother?
Just to lay the groundwork, so just to be ready.
Well, the being ready would be when the feds declassify whatever down to a one, or whatever, or take it off the shelf all the way.
They would have to legalize adult use.
Right, and that's the feds doing that, and when would that happen? So are we really be putting the cart before the horse? If the feds reduce this, and if, then we would, it seems like there's so much ifs and no timeframe, that, just my thought.
Well, speaking to you, and I'll skip the discussion regarding our per capita, what we saw as a potential via per capita, but if we were just looking at cannabis sales to achieve a tax goal. So if we sold $1 million worth, and it's on the slide right now, it's included in the staff report, if you sold $1 million worth of cannabis, what could that get you at a specific tax rate? So we just talked about how, you know, the markets demonstrate if you overtax cannabis, it won't work. Maybe we're geographically isolated enough that you could justify 15% local tax. However, the market is strong and robust in Long Beach, I'm not sure if that's viable. So if we just said the middle and said 10%, if we did $1 million of cannabis sales locally, that'd be at 10%, at 10%, that's $100,000. At $5 million, that's $500,000. $10 million is, the $10 million threshold is where we would finally get to $1 million. It should be noted that if a retailer sold $10 million worth of cannabis, it would actually be the highest grossing business in Avalon. Even if it sold $8 million worth of cannabis, it would be tied with our current highest grossing business. And that includes all of our businesses in town, every hotel, every retail business. That even includes Vons, and all of Vons taxable sales. So that's all of their sales of alcohol, toiletries, cleaning products, or any prepared foods. At $5 million, that would be, cannabis would be one of our top five highest grossing businesses in Avalon. So we just thought that that kind of gave a framework of what potential cannabis sales would look like in Avalon. Because I know that there is a dialogue about, you know, cannabis businesses saving other cities. It is really nuanced how that works. I think California City is something, a city that people look to often. California City is really kind of like a cannabis oasis in Kern County, that has about a million, a population of a million residents, and where it's the only retail cannabis jurisdiction within that county. So everything's so nuanced, and it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. But I know from a city staff perspective, we'd be happy to do further analysis if council so directs us to. Do you guys have any questions?
So, people are saying, oh, is that really going to happen here? You know, I hate to tell you, but weed is already here. I mean, we've already had people complaining that, oh, my neighbor, I just smell marijuana all the time, and, you know, so it's here, and people are buying it, and people are smoking it. And in this day and age, when fentanyl is out there, and you don't know, if you buy something from somebody on the street, you don't know what's in that. I would feel much better about our community and our guests having the opportunity to go to a state-licensed dispensary where they have to have tested product, and know that it's safe. So, you know, I say to that, if you care about your children, think about getting a dispensary, seriously.
I'm sorry, on that note, think about the children is, yeah, think about the children. We already have addiction here on the island. We already have drinking issues. We don't need to bring another one here.
It's already here!
Making it easier, I guess you're saying.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't be able to purchase it without, you know, you're not even able to enter without an ID, so-
Exactly.
You know, I see what she's saying in that aspect. I think my problem is, because I agree with Mary, there's people that need it for chemotherapy, sleep anxiety, anxiety in general, Tourette's, whatever. But if the Coast Guard's telling us it's illegal, that's where I'm having my issue, because-
But that's medical, and that's what we're going-
And that's what we're trying to fix, is the medical part.
We want the, and that's like-
But just to have it as recreational-
Yeah, and that is not taxed, so it's cheaper than them buying it over town, you know? So, because I think, I think medicinal delivery service, I believe, was working quite well. I believe he had contacts, you know, the sheriffs would look, go out when he was out at the West End, they would check him out, and he was doing, it was running quite well.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And we have somebody in the audience that's standing out.
Is it time? Janie Hall, 334 Clarissa. I personally, I may as well just to say it, but I'm really tired of giving all of my money to the city of Long Beach. So, and I also think that it's archaic to think that this isn't going to become legal very soon now in a federal sense. And as far as the children go, they have a lot to deal with, just with how many bars do we have per capita? I mean, huge numbers of alcoholics walking the street. And yet, on a cruise ship day, I do notice the smell of cannabis. And it's in the parks, and it's just about everywhere, because they're not able to smoke on the boat, but they're looking for a place. And it just seems like we could be futuristic-looking and get on board before, you know, the exact time. I realize that there's a number of, I mean, you did a great job with the data, but, you know, that's a lot of money. So it would appeal to me to have the city have that money, rather than-
So, if we, but if we had, let me just ask a question. If we had the medical deliveries, which we're going to be, we're going out to bid, would that not be cheaper for you to buy? And isn't it still pretty easy to get that doctor to sign us off for my backache or my headaches?
Oh, yeah.
So it'd be cheaper if you had medical delivery here than if we had cannabis here that was taxed?
Yes.
Yes.
It's mostly for sleep. I mean, at my age, and, you know? I practically don't know anyone that doesn't use it for sleep. So that's just one opinion.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you for hearing this.
Yes.
If I could just add something from the legal perspective. So some of our cities are on this list here. Napa is our city, West Hollywood is our city. We do some work for Santa Barbara, we do work for Santa Ana. And what we found is, is that the revenues are there for recreational cannabis. The projections as to what cities actually take are not as, are not actually what you get. So we just have to understand that we can say what revenues are, but our experience has been revenues are less. We do have problems in some of our cities where you have one establishment or two establishment that is legal, that you have other establishments popping up all the time. And so we have a lot of city staff chasing around it. You wouldn't have that issue with Avalon if you only had one, but you'd still have people maybe not wanting to pay the prices and taxes that you have in recreational cannabis, which we see in our other cities. And so, again, this is an issue, total issue of local control. We have cities that don't allow it, and we have West Hollywood that has cannabis lounges. And so we can help you whatever, but we do also have experience that the revenues aren't nearly as much as we think. There is some leakage with the illegal cannabis, and there are some law enforcement costs in chasing the vendors that aren't legally operating, in all the cities that we have. And we've got now 56, so.
I have a question. Is there anything that would prohibit someone with a commercial space to, because if everybody's got cannabis, and they have access to it, and they're bringing it over to the island, where we could, you could go to any smokehouse, and you could pay $10 to get in, and we have proper ventilation, and you can just sit there and get stoned? But not purchase cannabis on-site?
That's what they have in West Hollywood. They have cannabis lounges in West Hollywood, you do not have to buy them there, you can buy it elsewhere, and you can go into the lounge to smoke it. And so that is, that is an option, especially, I guess, you know, with your cruise ship people, if they're looking for a place. We don't allow it in public, but, you know, again, West Hollywood was the first that had a cannabis lounge.
Thank you.
And I would also like to point out that the cannabis customer is a different type of customer than what we see now. There aren't usually brawls, knock-down dragouts, domestic violence. There's a run on a restaurant, pretty much, or something like that, but, you know, we see a lot, a lot of violence in this town from drunk people. And we allow that daily. We encourage it. We just had a brew fest. We have the wine festival, you know? I've spent a lot of time chasing this down, and I will continue to see if we can get the federal law changed, but I didn't want to beat a dead horse if my council was not behind me, if my community was not behind me. So I was really hoping to hear from more people.
Well, now it will be, okay, get on Facebook and all discussion pages tomorrow, and it'll show up.
Oh, all right.
Because they didn't show up here, but they, I know, it's always after the fact.
I know.
Yeah, I'll, you'll only talk, and then I'll say what I was going to say, because yeah, I'm interested too.
Hi, Yolanda Say. So I'm a little confused here. So we are okay for medical? So medical marijuana can come across?
Medical delivery, yeah.
So what you're on the, what is on the fence right now is brick and mortar for just anyone?
Recreation.
Right. Okay. Well, most people who go into a brick and mortar cannabis place is for medical needs. A lot of it is recreational, but a lot of it is medical need. And Councilmember Ponte said that about children and being addicted. And I just want to let you know that my grandson is battling cancer, and they want to give him the lauded for pain. Talk about addiction, five days to get addicted to that stuff, five days. My daughter went and took a month and a half of paperwork that was this thick to go through the process to get vetted, to get him medical marijuana, and he is using that, and he is pain-free, he can eat, and there is no addiction. I used it when I had chemotherapy for two and a half years. It was the only thing that worked. There are a lot of people here in need, and people are selling marijuana on the streets, okay? Regulate it, get taxes for it. It's happening today. Meth is on the street, that's awful. You walk down the street, and there, it's everywhere here. Just like the, I think there's something that you guys need to do to make it, I mean, it doesn't have to be a brick and mortar, but if that's an option, I think you guys need to really look at that, because it's everywhere. It's in every city, you guys can regulate it, just like you regulate the ADUs. It's being done, it's better for the city to regulate something. When you go into those stores, you have to have your ID, you're vetted, there's a security guard, it's clean. It's not, people aren't hanging out in the parking lots doing drugs, smoking weed, they actually don't allow it. Some people from Idaho came when I was going to one, and they started lighting up, and they're like, no, 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 you can't do that, you know? I mean, there's regulations.
Right, again, but we're battling now, it is not-
I know what you're battling, but I'm just saying, change it on the municipal code for possible, there's got to be, if you can bring it for medical use, there's got to be, I'm not saying we need it, but I'm just saying that, like, you guys have on the municipal code that there can't be any tattoo stores, okay? Shops. It was voted many years ago, remember? Well, they're doing it underground. How safe is that? You know what I'm saying? That's not safe, that's health, safety concerns, so I'm just-
I just want to make it, I just want to make it clear, though, it's not the city's decision to say that you can transport cannabis-
I understood that, it's the federal-
You don't have that ability.
It's the federal law, I understood that, but I'm just- But I'm just saying that, like Mary said, put, she's just asking questions and seeing if it's a possibility. And I'm just saying that pharmaceuticals create addicts, so, thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
I'll just say that I had almost equal number of people in favor and against this, which is interesting. I feel like we don't often get topics that are split evenly that way. I don't think I've had one topic that's been split evenly so far. It's been very one-sided for most things. And so, had a number of people who said, "I'm adamantly against it. I don't think it fits with the community." Had some people say, "I'm adamantly for it. I think it's something the community could need and use." I agree that I think the people who are against it miscategorize what it can look like, how it can be, how it can be run. And if you look at cities like Long Beach, cities like Seattle, who sell cannabis in storefronts, it looks like an iPhone store. It looks like you're going to an Apple store. They're actually nicer than most stores around them. But given that, I do agree that our city and most of America has an issue with codependency in one way or another. And so, that worries me a little bit in opening up something here that will just add another layer of codependency for people, which most of them already have anyway, though. So, I agree with the regulation side of it. One of the interesting conversations I had this week with Assemblymember Lowenthal, because he was asking why we don't have a storefront. And I'd said, "Well, we can't. There's, it's federal waters. We would have someone get in trouble for that if it was for recreational. Medical's approved but not recreational." So we've been talking for a long time about trying to create, you know, the boat path that is a state highway. It's classified as a state highway with Caltrans and maybe that could be a solution. But I don't, then I mentioned that and someone else was like, "Well, then Hawaii's gonna want a state highway and so is the Philippines, so how are you gonna regulate those?" And I was like, "Cool, I don't live there, but okay."
But they grow it all over Hawaii. We can't grow it here.
Maybe we talk to the conservancy.
I already did.
Yeah.
And the island company, they said, "Well, not at this time."
Yeah. The challenge that I have in the info that's been presented, and thank you Devin for taking the time to pull all this information, is that the tax rate is interesting in that the amount of sales that would have to take place for it to make sense, to then also add the enforcement side and the regulation side of it, doesn't feel like it's quite balancing out where it should be. If it was a higher tax rate, then you're looking at people avoiding buying from the storefront to buy on the street, which they do now, which is a worry for me a little bit. But the amount of tax rate, if they were to buy a certain amount within the store, worries me that it wouldn't cover what that extra enforcement and administration might require in terms of another code enforcement or sheriff person in the contract. $120,000 to $240,000, or even double that, would eat up a huge portion of that tax revenue very quickly. And so that's the only, not only, but it's one of the many concerns I have of seeing what the numbers look like they would shake out to and where that would land. So, I don't necessarily have, I know that people are either very adamantly for or against this. I don't necessarily have a personal opinion on this because it's not something I partake in and so, it doesn't impact me one way or the other. And I wouldn't necessarily be averse to having the ordinance changed if that federal portion of it can be changed. But until that happens, I don't know if it makes sense to do it right now.
Well, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the medicinal could only be delivered, you can deliver it to hotels, you can deliver it to VRBOs and all of those kinds of things. So people have, if it's advertised by whoever has the business, they can get cannabis at a cheaper rate because it's not taxed. For now.
We just need to get that off the floor, off the ground.
So why do we have, why did we make the medical delivery only?
Because it was legal to do so.
Oh, so medical's not, you can't have like just a medical storefront?
I think the medical storefront was discussed, but it was voted down by the voters, right?
It was opposed.
Yeah, over the course of the conversations when the council was developing the initial ordinance, they were not wanting cannabis to have any kind of like physical presence in the commercial, special commercial zone.
Oh, so it was at that council when all of this was voted in by that council? They decided they didn't want a storefront, they just want a delivery only?
That's correct, yes. And it goes back to that kind of like toe-in-the-water approach. The council is being really mindful about a potential impacts in their conversations when developing the regulations.
And there was an election prior to the 2021 where it was voted down also. So it's not like it's the first time it was voted down.
That was Measure X, and I believe we, that advisory measure went before the citizens of Avalon, I want to say in like 2017, 2016, 2017?
It's on page 81 of the staff report.
The other area of interest that some restaurants in cities that have legalized recreational cannabis is food purveyors. So, having bakeries or restaurants that provide meals that are purposefully made with cannabis. And so that's something we've also never discussed. It's a relatively novel thing. I think most places that are doing that are in between like two and five years old. But I don't know if that's something we'd ever want to look at. But again, getting it here for the sake of doing that, and then the enforcement side of it is the part that's just not penciling out for me yet, so.
But he had, there were tons of edibles. He had tons of edibles.
Medical side of things from there.
So on the enforcement side, isn't it up to the purveyor to provide security for the place?
Yeah, the local's security makes sense to me. But the part that I think is the other side of the coin that Devin mentioned was the enforcement of illicit sales. So how are you-
But how are we enforcing illicit sales right now? There's illicit sales all over town, right?
Yeah, no, it's definitely, it's definitely a struggle and that's why I thought it was a salient point to include-
So how would that be an additional cost? Because they're already, they're already working on that.
Or could we charge that cost to the provider?
It might be cost prohibitive in terms of doing business, but that's something that we could look at when establishing maybe an annual cannabis fee. Because it is within this, even as our current cannabis ordinance is written, it is within our purview to assess a fee to cover the costs for enforcement and regulation of the permit.
But I don't believe having a storefront is gonna increase the illicit activities.
No, I don't think so either.
And it's already here and we're not, we're not doing much, we're not able to capture what's coming over now.
Right. So, just because we have an ordinance, just because we have a storefront, I don't see how that would increase the illicit activity. You know what, though, I think after, and thank you Devin, I didn't say thank you. You did a tremendous amount of research and I appreciate that, thank you. But I think what I'm feeling, I think I'm gonna keep pursuing this. I'm gonna pursue the federal waters. I'll talk to Josh. I'll talk to Garcia. I'll talk to the others, you know, and see if we can get that hurdle.
I mean, that's, that, okay, that's a United States of America hurdle.
Yeah, well, it's all good.
I know. So, no, that's great. And I know she's, she's our expert on broadband and you're gonna be our expert on cannabis and, you know, everybody's got their niche and so-
Good. And so, just one more thing. In doing the research for this meeting tonight, you know, I went through a bunch of stuff and it was like, "Okay, it can only be in commercial, special commercial and all this stuff." You know, as I look on the zoning map, here's the zoning map. There's like no detail. It seems very outdated. So, and looking at, could we possibly ask Sagecrest to look into the zoning and maybe redo the whole zoning stuff? Because it seems to be all over the place. And keep in mind, like, maybe a cannabis overlay while they're fixing up the zoning?
Do you have the general plan, the book? There's a fold-out map that's way more detailed than that one that has the special commercial like really clearly highlighted, I think.
Right, I mean, we have the zoning map clearly defined. I mean, we can, we can provide that and certainly provide it. If the question is, under our current zoning, is this, where would this fit? Under the current zoning?
Yeah, you know, just if they redid the zoning, because I know Susanna was working on that when she was here. Because, so there's, obviously the city understands that the zoning needs to be updated. So, while, while we're working through that, just to keep in mind, if we were to go there, you know, possibly a recommendation of where, what areas, whatever, because it says special commercial is purple and I'm looking at this big purple box and that looks like Vons, the old Vons. That would be great because then you could have a lounge and a dispensary in the same place.
We can certainly take a look at that. We can certainly take a look at that as we work through the zoning with Sagecrest, yes.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, anything else in your comments or, make it?
Good job, Mary and Devin, those numbers.
Okay, and thanks, audience. Yeah, meeting's adjourned.